I call the meeting to order at 6:35. We'll have a pledge to the flag. Matthew, please.
Please join me by removing your hats, putting your hand on your heart. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Burton?
Here.
Almond?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Alneese?
Here.
Mayor Stransky?
Yes.
Public communications, the city council welcomes input from the audience. If there is a matter of business on the agenda that you're interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The Brown Act regulations do not allow action to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. While the city council welcomes public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency, behavior that disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders infeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting, and that includes but is not limited to use of profanity, slurs, yelling from the audience, threatening remarks, physically threatening conduct, or physical or verbal displays of disrespect, will not be tolerated and the individual will be removed Public matters, does anybody have anything to bring up?
Yes.
You could go to the podium.
Please use my.
And state your name, please.
My name is Liam O'Carroll, last name spelled U-I-C-E-A-R-V-H-A-I-L-L. And I am here on behalf of Little Lake Range.
Welcome.
We passed a resolution at our February meeting on February 13th, whereas the Willets PD patrol vehicles are currently using a color scheme of dark blue on black, which is not easily recognized as a law enforcement vehicle. Whereas highly visible patrol cars deter infractions and drivers check their speed and self-police when they notice a visible patrol car. Whereas according to Vehicle Code Division 17 offenses in prosecution for 000.1 to 41610, a traffic officer on duty for the exclusive or main purpose of enforcing the provisions of Division 10 commencing with Section 20,000, or Division 11 commencing with Section 21,000 shall wear a full distinctive uniform, and if the officer while on duty uses a motor vehicle, it shall be a distinctive color specified by the commissioner. Resolved, the Little Lake Range 617 requests that the Willets Police Department adopt a new color scheme for their patrol vehicles that is higher contrast and more easily identifiable as a law enforcement vehicle. And I'll give this to you. Thank you.
Suprema Rodriguez, honorable council members and members of the public, I stand before you today to remind us of the fundamental truth, this council exists to conduct the public's business, not its own. The decision made in this room impact the lives of every resident of Willets, and you are as a representative, not as individuals acting on your own interests. Serving in this role means listening, especially when one would rather not. After the council failed to allow public comment on an agenda item last meeting, councilmember Burton told me, "Go home, nobody cares, you can speak next time." Mr. Burton, it is your responsibility to show respect for the voices of your constituents, even when they challenge you. It means ensuring that every person who takes the time to engage with this process is given the opportunity to be heard. California's Brown Act exists to guarantee this transparency and accountability. Government Code 54954.3 explicitly grants the public right to be heard. Every agenda for regular meetings shall provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the legislative body on any item of interest to the public before or during the legislative body's consideration of the item. This includes the right to comment on any item listed on the agenda, whether for open or closed session. The law is clear. The public must be allowed to provide input before the council deliberates, regardless of whether the discussion itself occurs behind closed doors. When the public is ignored, dismissed, or restricted without lawful cause, as it was in the last council meeting when I was denied, the right to speak and my comments were excluded from the minutes. This is not just a violation of the spirit of open government, it's a violation of the law. Government Code 54960.1 allows legal action to challenge decisions made in violation of the act. If found in violation, a governing body may be required to revoke its action, face civil lawsuits, and be subject to attorney's fees and court-ordered remedies. In some cases, intentional violations can lead to criminal penalties. Let us not forget why we are here. The chamber is not a private boardroom, it's a public square. Every resident has a right to participate in their government. Every voice deserves respect, and every council member has a duty to uphold the principles of open government, not just when it's convenient, but always. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has something to address the council?
Good evening. Stuart Handy for the record. I've moved here a little while ago, and I really enjoy living and working here in Willets. As a former resident of Reno, Nevada, I was involved in politics myself. Transparency is a must, and I've listened to a lot of the council meetings and listened to everybody here who's got valuable input to everything that's been put on the agenda. But change is also a must, and as times have gone by and everybody on this board can understand and realize, change takes place, as we're seeing right now across this country. Although some people don't agree with change, change has to happen. And I'm watching some of the changes here, and some people are upset, some people are happy. I'm taking everything in like a sponge because I intend to stay here for a very long time. Coming back to my roots is a small town when I grew up back east. This is the town I love in, love to be in, and I love to live in. And I implore everybody that has input to put the input forth and to question when things don't look right. There's an old saying, folks, "Things don't look right, things don't sound right, they're not right." But if things look right but don't sound right, or things sound right but don't look right, it's up to you, as citizens of this city, to determine whether it's right and wrong by your own accord. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Our next item, enactment of ordinances, which there are none, the consent calendar. The city council considers matters listed under the consent calendar as routine. The council will take action with a single motion and a roll call vote. A council member may request the removal of an item or items from the consent calendar for separate discussion and subsequent action. The following items, as presented, are before the city council for approval or denial. The city council meeting minutes of February 12th and February 13th.
Anybody have, up here in the daisies, anybody have anything to say about this?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the minutes as submitted.
Aye, aye.
Anybody from the audience want to say anything about the minutes of the last meeting? Okay, I will take nominations.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Almond?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Alneese?
Aye.
Mayor Stransky?
Yes. Okay. We could do that also with one count, that's all. Jerry?
I just wanted, made it on here, you said the minutes were changed.
Yes. I made the correction. Monthly activity reports, matters that do not require action by the city council but are in public interest, there is nothing. Commissions, agencies, and authorities, there's nothing for that. The city manager's report and recommendations, the annual update on the implementation of East Commercial Street Corridor Master Plan.
Yes, so, Ms. Mayor, council members. Last year, when the council adopted the East Commercial Street Corridor Master Plan, there was a provision within the resolution supporting its adoption that is brought back to the council as an informational item, how has staff implemented provisions of that document. So this is a quick check on how staff is performing utilizing that document. So there was a written report in the packet, and I just want to point out that we have been utilizing the document to help compose two grant opportunities, grant applications. These are large federally supported grant programs that would be used to implement certain provisions within the corridor plan that has been identified to ease pedestrian or increase pedestrian facilities within the corridor, as well as some of the traffic calming provisions as well. And also, and we're using the document and its illustrated design elements as kind of a reference point for moving other design components within the city forward. So we use that, you would see, for the gateway sign that's going to be put in the Highway 20 part, and then a directional sign with key elements identified that would attract motorists on 20 to basically turn north on Main Street and access downtown. So we have that. And then we also use the language, design language, for signage for four signs at our city parks. And I'm glad to note that our crew installed, how many of the signs?
Two.
Two have gone up. And one of them's right across from this building.
Yes, right across from me.
So, that's what I have on that update regarding the Commercial Street Corridor Plan.
Anybody have any comment?
I have one question, just for the city manager. The city had PG&E paid into a fund over the years for undergrounding utilities, and at one point it was targeted that they were going to underground the utilities around a park here.
Uh huh.
Do you know where that fund stands, or where we are in?
Yes. So the undergrounding project was identified by the previous council, and it was adopted through a resolution as the project that was put forward by this community to PG&E. We have work credits, and they have been locked. Basically PG&E has closed down that program to acquire additional credits. We have about, just shy of $900,000 worth of credits. That project, as defined approximately in the 2020 timeframe, is about $2,000,002,003. The project was presented to the previous council either to use general fund or ARPA project money or Measure K, and the council at that time never recognized it was to utilize internal funds to close that funding gap to move that project ahead. Previously, before PG&E closed, there was a loophole in that project or that project or program by PG&E, that a community could transfer its credits to another community if they had no intentions. Yes, they did, and that opportunity has closed as well. So we're kind of locked in this space. Our project is still delineated, we're still holding on to approximately $900,000 of work credits, but if this council, as we move forward with budgeting, wants to make a commitment.
I just hear that's kind of part of the corridor.
There's a lot of communities that are in the same position as we are. So PG&E hasn't decided how they want to move forward yet.
They're giving us interest on that.
Not a chance.
Yeah, no.
Not a chance.
No. We ask, no. Nice job.
Jerry? Tom?
No, just good job on the signs, I've noted most of them. We all call it Rec Road, but it's both sign Recreation Road and Budsider. I hope his family knows he put a new sign up there because his family have been longtime residents of Willets before the move to Orville, I guess. Thank you.
Jerry?
I really, I guess I'm looking forward to the one on Highway 20. I think that'll be great. I think a lot of the merchants have asked for something like that for a while, and it'd be nice to be able to push it forward as part of this.
We're moving forward with those two sign applications, they have to go through Caltrans, there's two different approval streams that we're negotiating or navigating through. The directional sign looks like it's going to be more straightforward. Gateway signs have a whole different criteria that we have to comply with. Hopefully by the end of this year we'll have those two signs up.
I saw the signs also, and I saw them when they were being put up, and they're very, very nice looking signs. Anybody from the audience has any comment on this? Thank you. We'll move on to the next item.
So this is a follow-up from the previous council meeting, where the council was made aware that CalFire is releasing these maps for the city of Willets, and they were released as of February 24th. The quick assessment is the fire hazard zones that were depicted for the city of Willets is not as bad as we initially expected, but there is some consequences that this community and this council is going to have to consider as we move forward with this program as depicted or described by CalFire. Next Thursday, we're going to have a public forum, four o'clock, essentially four o'clock. We're going to run it for at least two hours, we're not going to send people home if it gets to 5:30, 6:00 o'clock. We're going to accommodate as many individuals as possible. We're going to have copies of these maps, we're going to have copies of the fact sheets available for the public, and we're going to try to answer as many questions as possible, and also note the comments and questions that the public has, package them, present them to the city council, and then back to CalFire.
Start at 4:00 PM?
Yes, we'll start at 4:00. There are a couple of copies on the table back there if anyone wants them. I've had copies at the front counter, we can always make extra copies. It's also, the digital is on our website under the tab for this item, and it's also, you can navigate to the CalFire website as well.
I would just recommend that we make sure that the fire chief is fully aware of it, that he's here, and that the Municipal County Fire Safety Council is also aware of it.
Yes, we're working on those angles.
Is there any public comments?
Helen Sims, is there some reason you started the meeting at 4:00 in the afternoon when so many residents may still be at work? It couldn't be like 6:00 to 8:00?
If we do it later, we kind of middle ground. We'll run it at 4:00, and then we'll run to, like I said, if someone wants to stay here, I'll be here to 8:00 if someone wants to come in at 8:00. We have learned when we do meetings, if we have an earlier meeting, we miss the people later in the evening. If we have them later, we miss early. So that's kind of that sweet spot between 4:00 to 6:00, 6:00 to 7:00.
Or just extending it a little?
We can extend it, like you said, we're not going to chase any one way.
Okay, thank you.
Does the designation that yellow, that's most of the community, right?
Moderate, the yellow.
Is that what it is now?
Well, we don't know. This is the first time we had a map depicted for the city of Willets.
I guess what question really is, is does that designation, does it have any trigger on building code?
Right now, the way CalFire is explaining the situation, it is the very high, the red area. In time, the city is going to have to adopt some modifications to our existing planning and building codes to lessen that risk to development and properties.
So it ultimately will assist us in the city's ISO rating, the fire rating for the fire department?
Yes.
And then through the fair plan in Sacramento, the same thing.
The one that's broke?
Yeah.
One that's in the hole. I had a briefing on this last week, and this is the first step of probably two years worth of steps to getting redeployment of the fire resources throughout the state.
The other way to look at it for the benefit of property owners, residents, is that, as noted, this is going to be a multi-step process as we move forward, but as the city adopts provisions, it is intent, the intent there is to help property owners with insurance, because if we have provisions in place through the building and planning codes, that's going to recognize that it's going to reduce that risk. And so that's kind of how CalFire packages it. It hasn't been truly played out in the municipal level yet, so.
There's a bit of a Trojan horse in that.
Yes, it is. Like I said, the way the map zones were depicted and shown on the map, we had no input. This was all done through CalFire, staff, and their technicians. We can disagree with these boundaries, CalFire's not going to listen to us. We have to work with the tool that we have right now.
Brian, for the meeting next week, will we have it specified out by APN numbers, or some way for property owner shows up that they could say, "I think I'm in the red," will they be able to tell?
We'll try to work that out, either have a laptop or something where we can pull up the cadastral information and [inaudible].
Okay, because like I said, it looks like a couple spots down at the south.
Yeah, we're looking to have a couple maps large scale, and then the digital images so we can zoom in as well.
Anything from the audience?
Chairman Kavanaugh, will this go out on social media so property owners know to come to this meeting?
Yes, we're doing notification, we're preparing that right now.
Okay.
And we have it on our city Facebook and public community development Facebook page as well.
Okay.
I think this just applies to city limits. I don't think there's going to be CalFire there to talk about county.
Yeah, exactly. This is only going to be for residents within the city of Willets.
But maybe you know some property from CalFire.
I don't know, I like city lots.
Anybody else?
I just have one last item, just a quick informational. We are going to be sending out notices, or a notice, that we need additional member for the Measure K Oversight Committee. We do have one additional applicant.
We do, actually, there was an ad in today's Willets News asking for applicants, people to apply. I have the application here at City Hall if anybody is interested in sitting on the Measure K Committee.
Looks like the schedule that we want to accommodate is have a pool of candidates for your selection process to that committee at the March 26 meeting, so we can have a first 2025 meeting in April.
Four meetings a year.
Quarterly, unless they so choose to have additional meeting rotations.
Quick comment, Madge Strong. If you can wait, I don't know what the deadline for applicants for that, but I think Willets Weekly is going to start publishing next Thursday, so it would be nice if it got there because a lot more people read that than the Willets News.
The deadline is actually March 13th, returning your application, so I will get it in the Willets News.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Madge.
That's what I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the audience?
Department of Recommendations, proposed amendments to the sidewalk ordinance contained in the Willets Municipal Code Title 12, Chapters 12.16 and 12.17, presenting staff
Thank you. Okay, I'm not quite sure, do I just hit this button right here, it started? Honorable mayor and council members, Leilani Shine, Contract Planner, presenting with Community Development Department. So this is the fourth informational discussion, the first meeting in 2025 where we were discussing sidewalk ordinance revisions. In the past, city council member comments were reviewed from past meetings, and details addressing those comments have been added into this presentation today. In addition to the ordinance revisions that we're reviewing, the potential for city council to create a financial assistance program for private property owners to complete sidewalk repairs will also be discussed in this presentation. So currently, the city of Willets has many sidewalks that are in need of repair, replacement, or construction. For staff and property owners to efficiently address sidewalk repairs, comprehensive municipal code revisions are needed. Council may also want to discuss the creation of a cost-sharing and financial assistance program for private property owners during this meeting. The Willets Municipal Code does not adequately address property owners or the city's liability requirements for privately maintained sidewalks. Additionally, the code requires sidewalk repairs or replacement at the time of large structural additions or alterations without considering the change in construction costs since the time that the code was updated in 1989. From today's meeting, we are also looking from direction from council on how to enforce this current city code, and that's part of this discussion, is right now, the structural additions or alterations included for requiring sidewalk repairs include any construction which exceeds 25% of the value of the structure being constructed, the cost of $10,000 or more, and a result in the addition to or modification of repair of 300 square feet of building, or whichever of those definitions is less. It sounds like the $10,000 tends to be the less amount. Additionally, the Willets Municipal Code does not fully address California Streets and Highways Code requirements. Per California law, that's the Streets and Highways Code 5610, the responsibility to repair areas of sidewalk damage is the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. Although by state law, private property owners are responsible for sidewalk repairs and may be liable for any injuries resulting from sidewalk defects, California courts have held that the city is and can be held liable for injuries as a result of private damage to sidewalks if the city has not adopted a sidewalk liability ordinance, which is part of what we have here today. California cities have reduced trip and fall liability by adopting municipal ordinances that clearly and unambiguously confirm private responsibility for injuries resulting from private private damage to sidewalks. The ordinances do not change what is already vested in state law, but expressly establish that the property owner has the primary and exclusive responsibility for maintaining safe sidewalks, whether or not the city has notified the owner of their maintenance obligations. The city now has the tools, an online program called DataWorks, where they're in the process of evaluating the level of damage, or considered private damage, to the sidewalk, which is damage that is by statute the responsibility of the private property owner adjacent to the sidewalk. That's something city staff will have to make determinations on as they work with individual property owners. Examples of damage on the sidewalk for which a property owner is responsible for include, but are not limited to, missing pavement, raised, sunken, uneven pavement, holes or cracks in the pavement, and missing sewer covers or vent covers. So the, the two ordinances that we're discussing today in Attachment B, or excuse me, Attachment A, the proposed ordinances and resolutions address the backlog of private damage to sidewalks in the city and reduce the city's liability related to private damage to sidewalks. The ordinances would require sidewalk repairs when the cost of construction or remodeling work is estimated to exceed $100,000 rather than the city's current code of $10,000, or upon title transfer of real property, and that would establish, and would also establish joint liability for injuries resulting from sidewalk damage. Staff recommend reviewing and proceeding with these regulations to create a pathway for property owners to negotiate sidewalk repair costs as part of a property sale and to reduce the overall cost liability for the city related to trip and fall claims regarding private damage. In 2018, the city passed an ordinance requiring upgrades to private sewer laterals as part of property sale. Staff are proposing a similar ordinance for sidewalks. Like the sewer requirement, the sidewalk improvement ordinance would require either a property buyer or seller to complete necessary upgrades to bring a sidewalk into compliance before a title transfer is completed. Staff recommend one change in precedent from the sewer lateral ordinance. The proposed sidewalk ordinance would enable self-certification of the sidewalk improvement. Under this option, a buyer or seller would not need to coordinate with the city of Willet's staff to schedule an inspection. Instead, the buyer or seller would hire a licensed contractor permitted by the city to complete the repairs, and the contractor, professional engineer, would submit a self-certification of sidewalk compliance under penalty of perjury to allow escrow to move forward in a timely So these ordinances and some of the questions that have come up about them have been summarized briefly into these two fact sheets that we've created. So the fact sheet that has the pictures with the, the house there contains four main parts, a background, why Willets is discussing making these code revisions. It also talks about the California Highway Streets Code, the Chapter 5610, the sidewalk repair liability responsibility of private property owners. It talks about why, in general, property owners should fix their sidewalks, and it provides contact information for how to get in touch with city staff. The FAQ sheet is an additional handout that was created to address three main questions that have come up multiple times. Who is responsible for paying for and maintaining sidewalks adjacent to private property? When are sidewalk repairs required? And will the city assist with payment or completion of the sidewalk repairs if requested? So these could be circulated as, as part of moving forward with ordinance revisions to help the public understand what is happening. Funding for sidewalk repairs and construction, this is shown in Attachment B. It's a table basically breaking out different types of funding sources that jurisdictions can use for sidewalk repair, construction, replacement. So grant funding, that's that upper part of the table in the light green. That is typically provided through state or federal transportation grants that prioritize planned construction or replacement of roadway improvements, including sidewalks. For example, the city's received grant funding through the Clean California Local Grant Program to replace and expand existing sidewalk area, as it was recommended by the East Commercial Street Corridor Master Plan, and noting that it's located in a high-traffic corridor often used during special events. So city council is, is being asked to, to review this today, and also the potential for a permit fee waiver program. In the past, it was discussed to have two years of waiving permit fees for all property owners, creating a sidewalk management program to facilitate grant funding for sidewalk replacement or construction, basically having a plan in place that would allow grants to be applied for on a regular basis. And if there are any other types of funding programs that city council would like to give direction for, staff could try to help create that program or research how to create it. Basically, a separate fund, it could be like a revolving loan program, similar to, to other revolving loan fund programs that we currently have. So as an example, and I already mentioned in Attachment B, the city has received $31,500 to replace and expand 1,050 square feet of existing public sidewalks boarding Recreation Grove Park, and these funds will be used by the city for sidewalk replacement and expansion bordering that public park space. The grant application referenced in the, in the East Commercial Streets recommendations referenced this expansion as well. So to receive additional grant funding in the future for sidewalks, it's recommended to adopt a citywide sidewalk management program that could help prioritize these types of corridors or areas in town. We're getting close. So sidewalk management program, what this can look like. So no recent trip and fall claims have been paid out the city at this time that we're aware of. It's anticipated those expenses could increase if the city does not address the liability through an ordinance. Trip and fall claims are often associated with private damage. Attachment B showing the sidewalk management program is providing a sample program. This was provided by the city's insurance pool, so we, we were actually provided, this was just given to us as an example. And so if we were to move forward with drafting something like that, this was our GIS department that came up with these maps to basically show street widths in comparison to main intersections, and also in comparison with the DataWorks repairs mapping that we've already had as a separate information and data. So if, if city council wants to discuss a, a two-year fee waiver program, we would need to identify where that funding could come from, if, if we want to start a separate program or look at other ideas. And basically, I want to just keep this slide up. This is sort of going to be my end slide, but hopefully to just sort of get an idea from city council tonight, what, what direction and recommendations would you like to see as far as the first item, the liability and point-of-sale ordinances? So reducing the city's liability for sidewalk repairs that are to be completed by private property owners, and creating a point-of-sale ordinance to direct sidewalk construction to be included as part of a property sale. And if you've got any comments on the fact sheets, the drafts for those, but more importantly, what city funding, how you would like to fund these programs or see them enacted, is what we're hoping to hear from you tonight. I, I can help with any questions if you have them as well. That's my presentation. Thank you.
I would like, what about the sidewalks in town that doesn't go anywhere, just dead ends?
Sure. So we did research a little bit, so there's a draft provision in, in the ordinance now that would basically provide a waiver, and that could be applied for through the Services and Facilities Director. We could outline that provision a little more deeply, similar to the city of Los Angeles. They have a code provision that basically includes other conditions like you're talking about, so if it's, if there's, it's basically a deviation request saying if there's no issues with public safety or convenience, so that would be an example of a dead-end street that doesn't go anywhere, or if it's extraordinary physical conditions, if there was a really sloped area that wouldn't meet ADA requirements, it's a dead end. Those could be factors that we could add in.
Okay. And so there are several places in the community that doesn't have any sidewalks because they don't go anywhere. And my thought is, are we going to still make those people do their sidewalks?
I, I think it would have to be a combination of a case-by-case basis, but also if we create these mapping parameters, so for example, if there's a school located nearby or a senior center, then those might be parameters that could affect that. Does that answer your question?
No, because there's two sides of the street, and one has pretty good sidewalk on it, and the other one just doesn't go anywhere, other than if you followed it down and eventually goes into a school or into a shopping center or whatever. So I don't understand that. I mean, if I, if I wanted to go to a school, let's say Brookside School, and there's a really nice, you know, sidewalk on one side of the street, and the other side of the street is, there isn't anything for maybe five or six blocks. And, and I don't remember, I mean, there's just a lot of places in town that they has no sidewalk, and, you know, I mean, it just doesn't go anywhere. I just, it's really hard for me to believe that, that we're, that as a city, we're going to force these people to do that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, council?
Yes.
Maybe I can help phrase your, repackage your question and provide an answer. Let's just say in that scenario that you described, where there is three lots together, adjacent to each other, and there's no sidewalks.
Right.
The city staff, our recommendation to the council is not to have any type of policy where, right now, if you adopt something in time, that those property owners are going to have to put in sidewalks. There are trigger points in the proposed ordinance to say that if they're doing improvements of $100,000 more, then the sidewalk question would be discussed at that time, okay? There's also a provision that we're also recommending that would create a deviational waiver process. So if a property owner, say, is making $105,000 worth of improvements to their property, they don't have a sidewalk, they can petition and say, it doesn't make any sense. It, I'm at the dead end, or it doesn't add connectivity. I'm asking for a waiver from that sidewalk provision. So there is a relief.
And who decides that waiver?
Right now, and right, we haven't described it yet, but it would be the Director of Services and Facility.
If I can add, so that's how the, the current provision is added into the, the code, the draft ordinance. The LA ordinance, I believe, actually has a, a board of public works that they've created for this deviation process. So there's, I think, multiple ways you can draft that ordinance.
So I guess we could go where you could appeal, you could appeal the administrative decision to the city council. You could do it that way too, right?
I, I think you could write that as part of your ordinance, yes.
Because that way if somebody goes, I mean, I'll give you an example, on my street, it's not very wide, and the sidewalk that's there, where it's there, is substandard because people put them in independent of the city at the time, and I think mine was there when I bought the house, and it's not regulation-linked. It was that way when we bought the house, but apparently the previous owner told me that.
Building inspector built it.
I know. And he told me that he wanted a sidewalk for his kids when they got picked up or whatever, but the reality is, they were, it was, it was substandard. And across the street, there's no way you could fit, if you did two sidewalks on that street, it would, it would have to be one-way and a really narrow one-way.
Yeah.
And so, and so I guess that's the, I guess, across the street, for me, I guess, the individual would be, could ask for a waiver even if their property's sold, because, hey, sorry, at this side of the street, it's just impossible to put a sidewalk in. And, because we wouldn't ask people to put a sidewalk in that's substandard, right? I mean, and a street that's really narrow, we'd say, yeah, we would want a sidewalk, but it does, just doesn't fit, and that would be.
That's the additional complication, because sidewalks now to be, to comply with ADA, the curb cut, usually the drop-off where the curb cuts too steep for equipment, and they have, so you have to go behind, you have to go behind the curb to put the, the pathway in, so it's, you're right. I mean, it's, I mean, this is kind of a Pandora's Box. I, I don't think I'm, at this point, I'm not too interested in, in discussing or enacting, I'm happy to discuss it, but I'm not too interested in, in an ordinance that would trigger on the sale of a house to require people to put in a sidewalk. I, I just don't think I'm, I'm interested in going there. And the, and just a little bit of background on that, the reason that we have the sewer lateral inspection thing was a result, Jim Lance could tell you all the particulars of it, but it was a resolution of a lawsuit by Riverwatch over our stormwater discharge system, you know, our violations that they found in our, in our stormwater system. So that, it wasn't the city wanted to do a, really wanted to do that, it was kind of a force down our throat as a, as a condition of settling that litigation. And so I, I don't think that that's, you know, that isn't what's at play here. And I, I think that's, it's onerous. I, I, obviously, if, if there is an existing ordinance now that is, says it's triggered by $10,000, I'd, I'd like it better if it was $100,000. I mean, it was passed in 1968, the agenda summary set, and, and a different time, but I think it also needs to have some common sense in it that, you know, Sherwood Road is a city street up to the city limit sign. There's, we all know streets in town, Exley Lane, everywhere you turn, there's some streets, Peckel Road, probably wide enough, and it does have some on one side. But, but, and then the additional inequity of it is, is that city does go along and at times does a street improvement project and, and puts in sidewalk curb and gutter for the, the homeowner there. So then there's this built-in, you did it for Jerry, but you won't do it for me kind of thing, and it, and it's a solid argument, you know? So, I mean, I just don't think we need to tread, I'm not too interested in, in blowing this thing up and do a big deal.
I'm certainly interested in discussing unsafe sidewalks and getting grinders and getting unsafe sidewalks fixed for ADA compliance and so forth. But as far as requiring a landowner who's selling his property transfer a deed to put in a $31,000 sidewalk for 150 feet, that's beyond adminis, or bureaucratic, that's, that's communistic. I, I can't, and I appreciate the, the report you're giving us, but let me just tell you that as a resident on Redwood Avenue, I've probably had three people come by and tell me, guess what the city's going to make me do? And so they, they didn't do the land transfer, they didn't do some other improvements because of this honest requirement. And fixing the broken sidewalks is certainly the right thing to do, but as far as requiring landowners to put in thousands of dollars, creating a sidewalk that ultimately someone else is going to have to fix, it just sounds silly. There's a lot of things we need to deal with, sidewalks that are not on page one.
So Ms. Shine, I was curious, because the last time that this come to the council was September 25, they were, they were given a number of directions, there were four or five different things you were specifically asked to present to us, including gathering a total number of, of costs for, I think you were given the number $500 and below, adding up all those, so we can find out whether we could pay 50/50 on those. There was a suggestion that we have a tier program, that we don't have a one-size-fit-all, and that we needed to find out what the actual costs were, and, and I believe at that time you had said at the next meeting you were going to provide that with us. Do you have any other information with you right now?
So I, I can try. So, I can try to get that information summarized. I know our building inspector, Davy Bowles, was working on separating out some of that data. So, we do have the total costs for what the estimates were through DataWorks. I'm not sure that they divided out the public property, which was requested by council to see the difference between the public property sidewalk cost versus what would be estimated as private damage to sidewalk cost. So, we have those numbers, but I didn't want to present something that wasn't clearly stated at this time, since we're still working on separating that data out.
Okay.
So, I'm happy to provide that to you, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, again, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying here. So, in September, was five months ago, they asked you to begin separating this so that the city would understand how much our personal liability was, so that we can make a plan to do that, either through a capital improvement change or through the budget change. Because at the time, what many of the council members had said, and we have many here today, their concern was, how could we ask citizens to do this if we're not even sure how much we need to pay? So, it's been, it's been five months' time, and what I understand is that it still has not been done. We still do not know how much the city would be liable, how much we have to pay just to fix city property.
I think we have a rough estimate, but not exactly, from DataWorks Precision Cutting Company, correct?
Okay. There was a second request, put in by a number of different council members, and they agreed, asking specifically about the total number of costs for those repairs that were $500 or less. It was very clear, it was very specifically asked as well, and it's been, again, five months' time. Do you have any information about what the previous city council asked you to do?
So, I'm working with the community development department, so Davy Bowles, who is not here at this time, our building inspector, has been working to get those answers. So, I'm not aware of any changes in an update from him.
There was also a city council member in the past at this meeting who specifically had mentioned, because of her particular situation, that two years waiving the fee may not be enough time, because the amount that some of the people, including business owners, may have to take, it may take several years to gather these funds, and two years may not be enough, it may take three or four years to get that. And the suggestion was made that that be extended. Was there any consideration of that? Because this, what was intended to us again here is still two years. Is there, was there any discussion about maybe exchanging that longer, elongating that to five years, or three years, or four years?
Well, I think it was stated to have it be at least two years, because previously it was, it stated as a smaller amount, I think it was six months or something. So, we brought two years as an example today, but it was meant to be an open discussion. So, if that's your suggestion, we can definitely modify it to be five years.
My suggestion is that we follow what the city council already suggested at the last meeting, September 25. I mean, I just happened to watch it, I know you did, too. We all follow those type of things. And I was just curious about where we're at with that. There was also a request to provide a map regarding areas that we don't actually need sidewalks connected with the logic associated with that. Do we have such a map?
So, the graphics that were shown, the GIS mapping that was done by our GIS department, they are doing preliminary mapping to see the street widths, as I think the council members are bringing up, that some streets are too narrow to have sidewalks on both sides. So, that was part of that mapping effort initially, to begin with the street widths and the main intersections that are already scheduled for improvements through your Main Street Plan, your Safe Routes to School Plan, other existing plans. So, those are preliminary drafts that are added as part of that sample sidewalk management program. So, if council would like to basically refine that program to have priority areas for sidewalks, that's where we could start.
All right, well, I appreciate you taking those concerns of mine. Just before we move on to new things, and before we kind of rehash everything we've already rehashed, I mean, this is like the 34th time we've had this discussion, and it's a similar presentation each time. I just wanted to see that we would address what the previous council had did, I don't want that to get swept under the rug, or lost, or forgotten. I don't think anybody's agreed, you know, I don't think anybody's suggesting we disagree with California state law, we don't want to be liable for things we should not be held liable for. I'm with Mr. Burton with regards to, I'm a little skeptical about the transfer of, you know, the trigger being a transfer. I really feel like this is going to increase housing costs, essentially, because you're not going to pay for it, I'm not going to pay for it, it's just going to be the cost. So, it, that's a concern of mine, maybe you can address that. Is that going to increase housing costs?
Well, I would say it could increase property value, but that would be part of a negotiation. So, I think that's part of the goal of the Point-of-Sale Ordinance, is not only to create regular improvements so that we don't have to worry about regular maintenance if sidewalks are getting replaced when there's a property sale, it lessens the amount that the jurisdiction or that subsequent property owner has to pay if there's a regular sale that provides that. So, I think the idea behind that sale is that, at that time, if a property comes to sale, you can say, "Well, the city does require sidewalk improvement, this is going to be part of the negotiation." So, it can be factored in there as well. And so, rather than the city just setting aside a revolving fund and trying to pay out for repairs continually, the Point-of-Sale Ordinance is intended to basically help with that reoccurring maintenance, or reoccurring replacement or maintenance, and provide that outlet for negotiating the cost, so it's not a later cost for the city or the private property owner.
I just want to reiterate that, you know, I would like to see, because we have to make some budget decisions here, right? We're going to have to allocate some money, whether that be changing capital improvement, or just budget, or getting funding, or even getting grant money. But part of that decision needs to be based upon, how much money are we talking about? I mean, is it this much, is it that much, is it a lot, is it a little? And that's why I was looking forward to getting some of this information the previous council had asked for, because it kind of makes a difference whether we're talking about thousands, hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars. And I'd like to be able to delineate, you know, like, we're going to help people, and I think the suggestion was made last time, you know, anybody under 500, maybe we do 50/50. Anywhere between 500 and 2,500, maybe we have to run a short-term loan program. Previous council members even mentioned the idea that even though, I mean, in my mind, a couple hundred bucks ain't that much, but for other people on fixed income, how are they going to get that fronted up? Even if they get, you know, 3%, you know, it's one of the ordinances suggested, if they get 3% later, I mean, that's after we get the tax money from Mendocino County, and that's, that could be months and months and months away. That could be a long delay. So, it sounds good, I'm just a little skeptical about some of these, some of these activities. So, just wanted to reiterate my desire to find out what, how much are we looking at? Which ones are the most expensive, you know? And to get a differentiated idea of, okay, well, if we focus on safe, safe access to school routes, how much would it be? If we're focusing on the ones with most needs, how much would it be? Then we could make budget decisions. But until then, we're just really just guessing about what could or could not be, and that makes it difficult for us to make the final decision. So, appreciate your support on that, thank you.
Just one more thing that most people that contacted me regarding this were a lot of elderly folks, that, again, their concern was just, if they had to upgrade their sidewalk. I mean, honestly, one of the things I was thinking of just now sitting here, you know, I've actually gone out and asked people who park on my sidewalk, "Please get off," because I don't want to fix it. And, you know, and in that respect, I think I, you know, if I'm going to be responsible for it, I don't want somebody just coming up. And most people, actually, when I tell them, "Look, I'm going to have to fix this if you break my sidewalk," they go, "Oh, okay." They've been reasonable. But you drive around, sometimes you see people parking on the sidewalk, and their response is, "The street's so narrow that the only reason I'm parking on the sidewalk is because the street's narrow, and I don't want to get hit." Like, "But you're on my sidewalk." So, again, just kind of echoing that.
Yes, Bruce?
Larry, I think the other, other observation I want to toss in there is that I really consider myself an expert on the pedestrian use of Blosser Lane to Blosser Lane School and the feeder to Franklin. I have spent the better part of the last 45 years out on that, on that street, better than five hours a day driving back and forth on my forklift.
I've avoided you a couple times.
Yeah, you should. Give me a wide berth. My best days are behind me. But there is essentially zero pedestrian traffic on that street. There are no schoolchildren that walk to school on that street. It is so close to zero, you can't see it with a microscope. And that, and that's the only, only place that I'll profess to. You live, others that live by Brookside, I drive through that neighborhood, and I don't see much of that activity. But there is, you've got to admit, there's been a cultural change about how kids get to and away from school. And they are, they are shuttled by everybody, door-to-door. The school buses do a part of it. But sidewalks actually just are not as important as they used to be in the side streets of a community. They, that's, I think, now, you can say if they will build it, they will come kind of thing, but, but anyway, I just tossed that out. I mean, in terms of people getting around town, they're not used very much.
I have a question, and Ms. Shine, I appreciate your presentation, and I've never been a planner. I need you to help me with something. How many hours did it take to prepare your contract planner? How many hours do you think you used to prepare your report for tonight?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Just approximate, I don't care.
Maybe 10 hours.
10, okay, thank you.
Again, this is sort of a reiteration of the past reports, so, because I'm still reusing the ordinance language from the past council meeting, I don't have to change or update, you know?
Oh, it's just a question, I'm good, thanks.
Is there, I guess, is there direction from council to rather want to move forward with looking at the liability ordinance separately from the Point-of-Sale Ordinance, to separate those out? And then I just also want to mention, Walter has reminded me as well, the reason I brought up the trip-and-fall claims is that the city has not had any trip-and-fall claims. If it were to have a trip-and-fall claim, it could exceed the amount of the cost of some of these repairs. So, that we're talking about funding, you know, or setting up a fund, one lawsuit could exceed what you're talking about setting aside for future repairs as well. So, thank you for reminding me, Walter.
So, to the city manager, if there is an unsafe sidewalk in the city willits, what's our process for learning about it and our response to it?
So, over the last two years, staff has worked with a consultant who has documented the conditions. We have them geo-reference and documented visually. And then from that point, we would work with the property owner through a code compliance component to get that repair commissioned. And that's kind of where all this started, with the previous council. We recognized there was an efficiency in our outdated code, and we wanted to make it a fair effort to put something forward so that it can strengthen both our ability to address deficient sidewalk segments, as well as make it fair for the property owners. That's what started this whole process.
Wasn't it West Mendocino that did that?
Yeah, I think that was with the start of the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, that, because it was focused on the street, you know, it's going through, it's being scoped for street rehabilitation, so, yes, that came to the forefront. But there's a lot of streets in that same category, I think, we all identified tonight as well.
Well, I, you know, I, the other, the other aspect of it is, is that I think when people walk on, on an unprepared surface, they, they have, they think it's reasonable that if they fall down, it was because they tripped and fell, because they were walking on that, not that it was the city's fault. I've seen in other businesses that I'm associated with that have absolute perfect ADA everything access, and they have a slip, you had an icy condition, or whatever it is, somebody slips and falls on a perfectly manicured sidewalk that is not two years old, they fall on that, they're almost guaranteed they're going to sue you, it seems like. I mean, it's, there's an expectation of perfection, and I think people walking up a country lane and trying to decide whether to walk on the sidewalk or walk in the street will figure out where their safest route is, and they'll use it. But, I mean, that's, doesn't address the complete liability issue of, you know, you're kind of crossing your fingers, but you're crossing your fingers under both circumstances, even after you've done it. I mean, if we had that happen out here, Jim would say, "Well, we should settle," or Remif would say, "Settle it, it's not worth fighting."
Remif, by the way, is very interested in this potential ordinance, and we contacted them several months ago and asked for some statistics on sidewalk liability cases and the amount of money that's paid out and all, and whether they had any comment about the draft ordinance that was supposed to be last summer. And we got some statement from them, basically, that they encourage all of their member cities to have similar ordinance to this, and obviously, to be able to tap into homeowner insurance policies to sell injury cases, and to share that, share that expense with the city is a savings to Remif, and then by extension to all the member cities. And, plus, these ordinances address incentivizations to repair defective conditions, and so they're a mess of ordinance. Not surprising. Yeah. I'm curious what the council thinks about this, this notion that while the state highway code clearly for decades has put on private property owners a duty to maintain and repair the sidewalks that abut their streets that are part of the public sidewalk system, the citywide system, the law is not so clear that those property owners owe a duty of care to third parties who trip on the unsafe sidewalks that abut them. The government code clearly provides that the city is liable for any dangerous condition of public property in which the city is aware, it has an opportunity to remedy and doesn't do it. So, if we're aware that it's a bad condition, it's part of our public sidewalk system. And yes, the property owners have a state statutory duty to maintain, and let's say they don't, the city's going to get sued, the city's going to pay 100% of it.
Well, that's separate, then, the requirement to put in new sidewalks.
Right.
And so, the damaged sidewalks, which was my concern at the beginning, is, yeah, apparently there's a report of damaged sidewalks, I've never seen it, I'd love to see the report of damaged sidewalks, and that's something the city could, the council could focus on. But, Jim, requiring new sidewalks when a deed transfers from one end to the other, I mean, it's very easy to say, "Well, that, that cost is part of the negotiation." Yeah, it's a negotiation for whoever's buying the property and whoever's selling the property, and they're going to pay for the sidewalk, where now we're going to have a new sidewalk that ultimately is going to be cracked, and a council 50 years from now is going to be saying, "How are we going to repair it? Let's, let's work on the damaged sidewalks before we work on new sidewalks."
And I think we've heard from a consensus of the council that there are concerns of the Point-of-Sale recommendation. So, I was asking, what do you think about this other concept of having an ordinance that not, that by its terms says that the homeowners shall also be civilly liable to third parties who, who trip and fall due to the, due to the failure of the homeowner to maintain as they're statutorily required to do?
Is that part of what the presentation was tonight?
Yeah, so, the draft ordinance, the draft ordinance has language to the effect that, you know, from this day forward, it is now hereby ordained that private property owners who have a statutory duty to maintain and repair, and they always, and they have for 40 years or something, now, the city willits ordains that, and should someone trip and fall and hurt themselves because you have failed to fulfill your statutory duty, you are, you homeowner, or your liability carrier, is going to be responsible for the damages suffered by the person who-
So, who holds a sidewalk?
It's the city, well, it's the city-
Exactly.
It's public property, it's public property, and the city is liable for dangerous conditions of its public property. And so, this is an interesting question, because most parcels are owned to the center of the street. And however, there are city improvements, there's a city right-ofways that, on which there is city property, like a parkway or a sidewalk, and that's city property, it's public property, but there's a statutory duty, there's a statutory duty on the property owner to fix the dangerous sidewalk that abuts their property, that public city of Willes sidewalk. There just is not a clear, there's just not clear statutory authority about the property owner's liability for it.
Can you tell us other cities in this county who have adopted something, as Ucaya, Fort Bragg?
I don't know about that, LaLanne listed about a dozen. There's a dozen or so, and I think most of them are Bay Area cities. I don't know that there are any in Mendocino County.
Fort Bragg, they're about a year ahead of us, they commissioned the same assessment process, and they are going through modifying their ordinances. But their starting point with their original ordinances were newer than ours, so they had less of a heavy lift at the beginning. Their ordinance wasn't from the early 80s, it was more contemporary.
I just wanted to reiterate that for this very reason, you know, that this is why we need to know how much the city is responsible for right now. And we just want to refocus on, we really got to know what that number is, how much is on our property right now. As far as the liability to the owners, yeah, that's a deeper question, I'm a little more, I don't know, I'm not too concerned about the liability. I know there's legal hairs displayed about whether if it's, if they're paying to go to a third party. But to go back to Mrs. Shawn's specific question for direction, yeah, I feel like overall we definitely need to separate these tasks, because I think the question about the liability to the owners, you know, has some nuances to it, and the solutions to these things are predicated on having other information that I don't feel we have right now to even make a good decision about. So that's my suggestion.
Well, we're certainly giving a good primer on how to sue the City of Willes.
Bruce brought up the interesting thing, that people really do not walk to school anymore, the kids. If you lived in my area at a little bit before 8:00 in the morning, whether it's raining, snowing, or whatever, there's one, two, two people, the dad and the mom, that walk to school. And that's it. And that's at, down, look, to Brookside School. But you can't find a place to get in because of the cars that are backed up around the corner to Pine Street, because everybody's taking their.
Well, they have a valet service at the school to get your kids out of the car.
And so consequently, I don't think that anybody should have to do these things because nobody uses them.
Well, it's the law.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to be paying liability, we have two different, if somebody gets hurt, and we're on city property, they're going to sue the city. Well, I'm the taxpayer, I'm a property owner, I'm the one who's losing the money on that, both ways. I'd much rather hold the person responsible who has the property to pay for that liability than for, to have the whole city pay for that liability, because I'm paying both times. It would happen in both directions. And again, I'll just say that that was previously brought up by the previous council, and I feel like we should consider what the previous council had to say about that, too.
So you ask about direction, and certainly, I believe it's fair to say that we're much more concerned about repair, the damage than we are about requirement of new. I don't think I'd take the motion.
I'd make a motion that we up the trigger amount from $10,000 to $100,000.
Okay.
That's part of it, isn't it?
Yeah, but that's all I want to do. And I'd just say, go back to work and find some other project to entertain.
You know, the other thing is, as I walk around town, and I have been contacted.
I'd like to see if I can get a second, and if I for lack of a second.
Okay, so I want to, no, no, I want to make sure I understand. So you're saying of the recommended action, instead of $10,000 repair, up it to $100,000 repair, but what is that $100,000 repair going to require?
Upgrading the sidewalk. The same as it requires right now? Well, right now, I think if you don't have a sidewalk, you have to put one in if there's over $10,000, but we, I don't think it's been.
Member Burton, this is not an action item, so if the consensus of the council is to have the $100,000 as a threshold, staff is, so give us a list of what you want to see, or what you want us to provide at the next time we can bring this forward. So right now, just throw out the items, we'll list them, and we'll respond.
Go ahead, Jerry.
I know when I've been asked by the folks of Watts something, they, somebody asked me the other day how they would provide their input on bike lanes and sidewalks, I told them, you know, what's the funding mechanism, they were asking me about county stuff, and I told them, you might want to talk to the folks at MCAG and get a primer that way, because, you know, the city interfaces with the county, especially with school-age kids, et cetera. So I talked about safer route to school meetings, et cetera. But I think I, one of the concerns I also have is that, again, fixing the problems we have, there are parts even on the way to Brookside that homeowners have basically put their planner boxes out there in the city right-ofway. I mean, I'd like to see some of that addressed, either through code enforcement or as part of this process and cleaning up ordinance to say, you know what, if people can't walk in front of your house and there's a sidewalk, then you need to fix it.
Well, that starts with public education.
Well, I'll tell you what, I think people have been asked and done this, I think we just, sometimes the whip needs to be cracked sometimes in some of these areas, but also I, and again, I also agree that there's a, there needs to be a process for helping some folks out, they may want to fix the problems but can't, et cetera.
Can we agree on the consensus to Mr. Burton's suggestion that we do $100,000?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I think staff had pretty much said that that was because of the, just inflation, I mean, the $100,000, I mean, $10,000 isn't much on a construction project these days.
And to council, you're saying we would have to adopt something that says, yes, a homeowners association, or a homeowners insurance would be responsible, or is that just a given through liability attorneys?
I don't have the text right in front of me, but there's a definitive paragraph that LaLanne's ordinance includes that clearly puts on the property owner a liability for injuries caused by the failure of the owner to fulfill their statutory duties.
And if we didn't do that, is there still, an attorney would still have the ability to file a lawsuit against the homeowner?
Interesting question. So like about 30 years ago, someone sued the City of San Jose due to a defective sidewalk, they also sued the homeowner.
Right.
And the city said, there's this statute, they did to fulfill their duties under the statute, so this is on the, this is on the homeowner, it shouldn't be on the city. And the court disagreed, because it said that this statute that imposes liability does not clearly, does not clearly state that there is a duty owed to third parties, that a property owner owes a duty to third parties to make it safe, to prevent them from tripping and falling. The statute that you're citing is not clear about liability, so, and so, but the court went on to say, if you were to adopt, City of San Jose said, if you were to adopt that ordinance that said that there will be liability against the homeowner if it fails to fulfill its duty, and then in that case, because cities have the right to enact laws for the safety of persons within their jurisdiction, that would be an appropriate law for the city to enact, and in that situation, the homeowner would have liability. So after that, the City of San Jose adopted the very ordinance the court was suggesting, and someone tripped and fell, a different sidewalk, different homeowner, and a different result. And in that case, the court held that the homeowner had a liability along with the city, both, the city has a liability because it was a dangerous condition of public property, there's a government code section that creates that liability. But now the City of San Jose had an ordinance that said likewise, the property owners shall have liability to that circumstance, and that went up on appeal, and it was confirmed on appeal, yes, the property owner may have the liability if there is a city ordinance to that effect, and that's been the law now for like 25 years.
Certainly, the law at the local level?
The statewide level. That's a State of California appellate court decision that puts that.
Understand, and so, we pay money to League of Cities, we pay money to a lot of cities that, a lot of organizations that represent all the cities in the state of California, and it seems to me like the lobbyists could get our state legislature and senate to say, we can take care of this in one fall and swoop, to say, this ordinance that was enacted by the state legislature at one time could be adapted and adopted to change to where it's going to be the homeowner. Otherwise, there are 420 cities in the state, and everybody's going to have to do something a little different? It just seems.
No, no, so there are laws, there are statutory laws, and there's case law, and both are binding and enforceable.
I understand that.
And so, there is existing valid California appellate court decisions that uphold the city's right to impose liability at a local level on a homeowner who breaches his or her duty to maintain the sidewalk as the street and highway code requires.
Thank you.
Can I ask Jim a question? Same scenario, but we don't have our ordinance in place, so let's say somebody comes up to, the city notifies Larry, hey, your sidewalk needs to get fixed, and he kind of shines it on, and then there's a trip and fall claim. The fact that the city had notified Larry, does that add any liability to the homeowner, or does the city absent that? I'm just curious.
I think that if there were private things that Larry did that enhanced the liability, let's say he grew a tree that had roots that are, really caused sidewalks to raise and stuff, a tree that was not on the city's approved list or whatever, or he did something else that created or enhanced the liability, in that's, in that case, I would, I would think that he may be found, I'm sure he did.
Okay, serious. And then lastly, I think I would love to hear if anybody from the public has any input.
Yes. Anybody from the audience?
One sec.
There's somebody coming up.
My name is Nicole Alba. This is kind of dear to my heart, because last year, April, right across here in front of the museum, my daughter fell. Have I sued the city? No, I did not. Did I ask for the repair of her glasses? Yes, I did. Did I ever get it? No. Was the sidewalk brand-newly done? Yes. So it's right across the fire department, the fire department came out and got her and helped her out. That's just her face, this is not the rest of her body. So even when you have a brand-new sidewalk that just got done, stuff still happens. It's up to the person, if they're going to come and sue, I didn't, because I don't feel the need to. I fell a while ago on those nasty streets in front of Hawaii's where the trees lifted up the sidewalk. I had bloody knees, did I sue the city? No, I did not. You know, it's, I mean, you can't say that everybody won't do it, I choose not to do it, you know, but it's like, even when they're brand-new done, stuff still happens. So, and that sadly is one of the points. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Ellen Sims, and if you don't mind, I actually have two. In this scenario, let's say I've just paid $31,500 for a new sidewalk. Do I have to get that permitted? Does it have to be inspected? Is it my word against the city maintenance that that sidewalk is now perfect? And does that limit my culpability if someone trips on a hair in front of my house? That's a question.
No, I mean, you'll still get sued.
I'd still get sued.
Self-certification process, as a self-certification, so whoever contractor you use would have to certify, if you choose to use the city's people, they would also have to.
So the only motivation I have to fix my sidewalk is maybe the level of the lawsuit, right? Okay. And if I could, could you go back a couple slides?
I could sure try.
We're shifting slides on the deck here.
It's the one that has the due date, or the do by, planning by June 2025?
Okay.
Oh, there we go, I'm sorry.
There would be permits required, but there is a property owner, we would, we could print to the ordinance, a individual certification process.
Well, that, but the, Brian, I mean, when the, when the city inspector goes by and inspects something that's already incorporated into his permit fee, so he's not paying an inspection fee for that, but if you get, if you're, if you're demanding an engineering stamp that says that this thing is built, you know, to spec, and it is, and it's being approved, but you're asking it to be ratified by a professional, that professional is going to charge you to come out and look at the finished product and say, and agree, I'm not sure that that's a saving to the end of the bill.
It's an option that we put out there, it may expedite a transfer of real estate. And the other thing, just a side note, we're also looking, as we move forward or if we go backwards, and what is being presented, staff has discussed about putting together cut sheets or fact sheets for basically if a homeowner was going to have a contractor herself do the work, here's the specs on the concrete, here's how you have to do the formwork, just to get as much information out there to the general public to expedite and make this easier and have less of a responsibility for staff.
Okay. Then that answered me, thank you. This date, June 25th, staff planned to complete construction by June 25th. Is that flexible, and how much does that change based on the back and forth about different kinds of sidewalk structures here? Is there any punishment for not meeting that date?
Oh, that's before Frontier Days, let's hope they do it.
This is for that specific project, this isn't overall, that's just for that project. That's on the books to get done before.
It's just like 150 feet of sidewalk.
Yeah, it's not that much, it's just preliminary to the park improvements that are going to be done there, yeah.
So Frontier Days is the incentive to get it done?
No, yeah, no, that's a city project, it's part of a city project, yeah.
Matt Strong, I'd like to comment also. First of all, I live right in the city, and I really appreciate that we're a walkable city, and I know a lot of people do. So even if the kids are getting ferried back and forth to school, I want to be able to walk around the neighborhoods. And I don't expect to see sidewalks everywhere. There's narrow streets, there's very steep, you know, terrain next to the, next to the street in some cases, so I really like the proposal that any requirement for property sale or major improvements can have a waiver of that requirement. I think that's, that's very reasonable. But I do think it is beholden upon the city to undertake an ongoing program to identify the things that are hazardous and fix those, and to continue to provide sidewalks in the walkable portion of our city. So I, I don't, I don't agree that it's out of, what's the word, out of step with our culture to have walkable sidewalks. I think it's very important. Certainly, when you get out in the county, no, you know, it's not. So I don't want us to sort of write off this idea of maintaining and improving our sidewalks in the city. I do think the liability issue is sort of, in my opinion, a no-brainer. You should have the provision that puts at least a burden of maintenance on, you know, while the burden of maintenance is on the private owner, they also should have a burden of the liability. If they are not maintaining it, and somebody trips and injures themselves, the potential liability to the city and to the private owners is way more than fixing the sidewalk. I mean, when people get hurt, those liability costs can go really skyrocketed. So this is an important investment for our own financial protection as a city, but also for the safety of our residents using the sidewalks. So I do hope that you aren't going to dice this up and throw half of it out. So I do hope that you aren't going to dice this up and throw half of it out. I think that the report here brings up a lot of important ways that we can improve the sidewalks and that we should, but I also agree that we need to identify the costs involved and that the city should bear as much of that cost to ease the burden on private owners who can't afford to do that maintenance. There's a lot of low income people and elderly people who, you know, that cannot afford it. And yet, their sidewalks also need to be maintained. So I want the city to look at those, how to do that equitably and keep in mind public safety. Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I know this is a complex issue and there's lots of things to weigh. When we talk about the city, I want to remind you that sometimes we think of the city, but really it's the taxpayers. So anytime the city gets sued, it's the taxpayers that pay the bill. So we need to find a balance. I heard the word education, which I very much appreciate. I know that having served on the prior council and given direction as Vice Mayor Alanice was talking about, last September, we were talking about how could we potentially phase something in that has a component of education, reduces the taxpayers' liability and respects the fact that we live in a rural community and we still want to ensure that individuals have safe access to sidewalks in our community. So I would ask that you, as mentioned before, that you look at the prior direction. There's a lot of time and energy that went into that direction. You have a starting point, maybe build on it, add a little bit to it, but give clear direction. I was a little frustrated, like it sounds like maybe others might have been, but there was a presentation where we already had a presentation before, but then I had to remind myself that there are new members of the council and you haven't maybe heard all the information. And so it was important that you hear it tonight. But I hope that we continue to move forward with clear direction so that we don't have another meeting of spinning our wheels. Thank you.
Anybody else? Just right here.
My name is Robert Smith. I just wanted to say that as a disabled person that gets around the city, I may get around a lot easier than most disabled people, but I would definitely say to focus on the parts of the sidewalk that is already there that just end in a curve and where I can't get off, that's probably the biggest frustration that I have traveling around the city. And also there's a few spots that I can think of that I have to go to like the entrance of the person's house to get onto the sidewalk. And that's kind of scary going into the street. I do drive, but occasionally I do use my scooter to get to the side. And there's definitely a few spots that would use some improvement on that part for sure.
Thank you.
And so, Robert, if we had someone contact you, you could tell us the problem spots that you're aware of? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Dan Loudon. The American Disability Act of 1990 clearly states one quarter inch height and anything more than a quarter inch is a violation. So as this gentleman was just talking about, let's go down here in front of the Chambers sidewalk. You have a driveway that goes right into a chain link fence. That's city prop, isn't that city's?
That's a skunk, isn't it a skunk?
A skunk train?
No.
Well, the Johns Place property that's fenced up now? Is that the one you're talking about?
Oh, we're Kimmy's Byses.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you've got a driveway that goes into a chain link fence. It's not ADA. I mean, you can go all the way down the street and find a thousand ADA violations. So you might want to fix some of the stuff that's already out there and it's your responsibility instead of forcing residents to. Let's look at the corner of Humboldt and East Mendocino. That's a dirt sidewalk on the north side. There's two redwood trees. There's no way you could put in a sidewalk without taking out those two giant redwood trees. Already the roots are tearing up the curb and the street itself.
Well, every redwood tree in town.
Right. Is subject to raising the street and busting up the curb.
As well as your foundation.
Yeah, of your house.
And encroaching in your sewer line.
Right.
Digging way too deep here.
So there's things, because a brand new sidewalk doesn't guarantee that somebody's not going to slip and fall. That's just the way it is. Fix what you got. Thank you.
Lyndee Johnson. And I have taken a personal vow to never drive my car in Willets. You may see me in a car and tish tish me, but I ride my bike and walk. And there are two things the city has done for me that I really wanted to thank you for. Paving a van lane has improved my life greatly. And I live on West Mendocino and that sidewalk has really made a difference in my life. So the amount of money you put in sidewalks is valuable to citizens.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the council. Tom. I'm sorry.
Ragda Zakaria. I just want to know, what's the bottom line of this? I've been attending the council's meeting, God knows for how many times, presentation. What's the business plan? Jim, Mr. Jim, you said like the owner insurance needs to be part to pay for. Are you going to go to the state and convince the insurance company to be liable as part of our liability insurance? I mean, it stated the sidewalks are the city ownership. So do you want me to watch people walking in front of my house? Because people, when they know there is now a liability, they're going to make incidents because they know they can get money. So it's owned by the city, like any other projects. You start working and fixing the sidewalks. You can get a law for that, you can get it and fix each sidewalk for safety. Other than that, why are you complicated the whole thing? And besides, to say if you sell the property, you have to negotiate that, it's not in the real estate disclosure anyway. It's not going to work. So just keep it simple. Stop wasting our time, their time, and just make a final decision. The city is responsible to fix the sidewalks like any other projects. And I mentioned that last meeting. When I cross the street on the main street, especially at nighttime, I have to use a flashlight. So if I get hit by the car, am I going to sue the city? I mean, enough is enough.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have one more point.
Okay.
On the corner of Mendocino and Humboldt, where these two redwood trees are, at night, if you go there right now, the branches completely block that street light. You're just wasting energy. There's a liability. There's plenty of places in this city where the street, the tree branches are blocking the streetlights and sidewalks you can't see.
Thank you.
So I make a recommendation that we send this back to staff and focus on $100,000 requirement with homeowners and we look at, we pay more attention to the damaged sidewalks. I just don't want to spend a whole other time forcing landowners, homeowners to buy new sidewalks. That's my recommendation.
Anybody else up here?
No, I'm in general agreement with Tom. Again, I'd like to stay focused on trying to make an ordinance that we have or a policy that we have in place now more workable for the community. And I think that $10,000 trigger number is, you know, I just, you can really get, run down a rat hole on the liability deal. I mean, I think the comment that was, we got to keep in mind was that we haven't had one of those kind of claims. I mean, trying to fix something that really hasn't demonstrated that it's broken. And I would also claim, remind everybody that as part of the relinquishment of Main Street to the city of Willets, Caltrans came along and rehabbed both sides of Main Street from Highway 20 up to Sherwood Road and beyond with ADA compliant, 100% approved sidewalks. So we have invested, you know, Caltrans tried to buy their way out of the relinquishment requirements by offering us $5 million. And we turned them down. And I talked to Matt Brady about that after the project was done and the street was relinquished to the city. I asked him, Matt, did we make a good decision to not accept the $5 million and do the work ourselves? Because that was their engineer's estimate. He said, oh, yes. We spent 10 or 12 million dollars rehabbing that Main Street. So I mean, I, we have, I mean, I think the city has demonstrated in its high traffic or the more utilized, most utilized part of town, it has made a significant investment in ADA compliance and walkable sidewalks. So it's an ongoing project. One of the, you know, it's one of the core, you know, parts of supply and service to the city is taking care of streets and sewers and roads. I don't think we're, I don't think we're trying to deny that. I think we're trying to accommodate everybody as best we can. And so I, anyway, I agree that I'd like to see that bumped in. And I wouldn't, you know, I don't really want to ask the staff to put in, I mean, the city has, the city owns that liability. And knowing what it is and trying to quantify what that number is, is, you know, it's, you could come up with something, but I'm not sure that it is really all that helpful in the decision making process because you own it anyway. You own it, whatever it is, you know, it's, if it's, it's really, I'm not sure that making you guys try and do all the legwork and measure all the streets and measure the widths and try and figure out every linear foot of, you know. What, Brian, did you tell me you had 25 miles if you?
25 if you miles of sidewalks in this city of Willets?
Yeah. Both sides of obviously every street. Anyway, I think this takes a good little shot at it and moves us down the road a little ways and I'd be happy with that.
Anybody else up here? Anybody else up the audience? Okay. Did you get what we had?
Could I ask one clarifying question? So I heard that there's the consideration of raising that threshold of $10,000 or more to $100,000 or more. Are you proposing that with the draft language that's been provided within the liability ordinance or rather amending the existing municipal code as it is? I guess the liability ordinance does not include that provision for the $100,000. It's within the point of sale ordinance. So I guess I'm just trying to understand, is council wanting to move forward with the liability ordinance and try to maintain this threshold? Or what's the direction as far as the point of sale?
Where is it now? Where, in what language is this $10,000?
So it states.
No, not in the state law. It's not in our ordinance, it's in the state law.
So basically, you're required as a property owner, as soon as the sidewalk is in disrepair, you're required to fix it in the state law. So if there's a crack or something that it does not meet the standards, you are required to fix it immediately through state law. Is that correct, Jim?
Right. And we're not changing the state law. We are just, in addition to that state law requirement, you are suggesting, staff is recommending a new ordinance that in addition creates a responsibility to repair sidewalks when you are doing major improvements of $100,000 or more, right?
I think that's correct.
And it's $10,000 now, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And additionally on the sale. That's staff recommended.
I'm not, I'm not going to suggest that we do it on the sale because I think that's just.
No, I'm summarizing the staff's recommended ordinance.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I think that's what she's asking too, because it's not going to be part of the sale because we're moving away from that idea temporarily. So the real question is, do we just want to move that language into the liability? Or just not get in the liability and just change the actual existing?
Right. It just changed existing.
I think we just want to update our existing ordinance to change, scratch out the $10,000 and put in $100,000.
Yeah, exactly. That's the way I was going to instruct staff to proceed, was just to strike the $10,000 limit and insert $100,000.
Yeah.
So it sounds like the consensus of the council is not to create a new liability ordinance upon the property owners, correct?
Correct.
You're correct.
Yeah.
Can I do that up here?
What's next, Larry?
Okay. Ken. Monthly report.
Department Monthly Report presented in the second meeting of each month. Nothing to add?
Well, you just jumped in. Staff had a good meeting with the tenants back in January. It was very productive. We had a good exchange of ideas. We're going to be reintroducing the volunteer work program. They have expressed an interest to take on some of the work in this general maintenance task up there. And we're willing to accommodate them. So that was a good discussion. It was a good turnaround from the tenant meetings that we've been having over the last two or three years up there.
Are we selling fuel up there now?
Yes, sir. And it's only for aviation uses.
Oh, no. Why are you looking at me?
That is something that's a big topic with the FAA.
Okay, airport?
We just did that.
Community development.
Nothing to add? Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Brian, your.
So there is a finance report in the packet. Just kind of a close out of some of the items that we've been working on. Primarily, we received the 2223 audit. It's going through review right now. The numbers look good. The intent is to present that to the finance committee. I believe that is March 19th. We changed the time, remember Alman?
Yeah, to, it's going to be 3:30. That's a call to him. So the finance committee, I know you're interested, is going to remain the same date, the third Wednesday of the month, but it's 3:30, not 9:00 AM.
Okay. And then from presenting it at the finance committee, we'll present it to the full council on the 26th with the recommendation from the finance committee.
Police department?
Yes. Interim Chief Parrish is not here. I can answer any questions as well. He's dog sitting, actually.
Sounds right.
Go ahead.
Services and facilities, anything to add?
The only thing I have to add is that on your way out, you may want to go take a look at the Wood Street parking lot. The solar lights, most of the light standards have gone up and they were testing them out today. And the patterns are looking good. It looks really nice.
Lights ought to be on tonight, huh?
Yeah. Swing by there and take a look and stuff. It improves walkability there and safety. So, yeah.
They're attractive too.
Long time in coming, they're all solar, they're off grid. So they'll never, you know, we're not drawing power from PG&E and they'll, if the power ever goes off, they'll stay on all the time as a safety feature. Yeah.
It's a really long time coming.
Yep, and it looks good.
Is there anything else for utilities?
Unless you guys have any questions, do you have anything on utilities or anything? Crews have been working hard on fixing leaks and keeping this, the waste. Crews have been working hard on fixing leaks and keeping this wastewater treatment plant going and the water service going, so everything's been good. There is a notice going out, they're going to be starting flushing on some of the lines, I believe, today they might start paying mountain and working their way through the system, so just be aware of that.
Walter, you know, you mentioned at our water wastewater meeting, the, I guess where we sit on our, our water, how to do-
Overflowing.
Yeah.
Oh, over the dam, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Full capacity.
Full capacity. We're doing well right now and everything. I think, did you post the video of the flow over the dam and or not?
I think I ever got the video from you.
Oh, okay. We'll post that and everything. It's pretty impressive, yeah, yeah. We're doing well on water right now.
Any public comment on Department Monthly Reports? And city council announcements, communications and reports? We have an item, the finalization of the 2025 equipments and scheduling of city committee meetings. We have a few committees that are not, does not have city representation. We need to get those to the, in our, I believe, gate to the-
I can't go to any more of them.
You can't go to them.
Well, all of them are filled, we just don't have alternates on some of them, correct?
Yes.
Well, we do need a second for the transportation committee. I believe it's blank, there's only one, we need two there.
And also staff is wondering if any of our internal committees' dates and times are going to change as we move forward. You accommodate your schedules, that's what we need to know.
We did the-
Finance committee.
Water wastewater, we changed the time and the date.
The date is on Tuesdays, the third Tuesdays of each month, and it's still at 10:00 AM.
Yep.
So the finance committee would be a permanent change, 3:30, because it would be when he gets out of school. So not just the one day.
Let's see. We need a second for the transportation committee, which meets on the fourth Thursday at 9:00 AM. The time is up for discussion.
I'd be willing to be the second on that as long as I have enough advance notice so that I find out if I'm not working or something.
Okay. Do you want to move it to more in the afternoon?
Right. I guess Larry, you're the one on there, so whatever you want and I can, as long as I-
I can come to it, whatever.
What's a good time for the afternoon for you, Jerry?
Probably 3:00 or 3:30.
Just 3:30 on the fourth Thursday of the month. And it looks like that's it, other than an alternate for the League of California Cities.
Anybody for that one?
How much is that, how much time?
I go to all the meetings, so it'd only be, some of the meetings are like Fortuna or-
I'll be alternate, I'll be alternate.
Okay.
That fills that up. Do you want to report out on the Sonoma Clean Power that you went to the meeting today?
No, I went to the selection.
Pardon me?
I went to the selection.
You went to the selection commission, I believe, to see if-
But the Sonoma Clean Power is in Fort Bragg.
They, they don't meet in Fort Bragg, but-
Well, they got the-
Fort Bragg can be a city representative and they can-
They took the seat.
So somebody in Fort Bragg has taken that seat. Do you have a name for that person?
No, I do not.
Okay, I'd be, I'd be interested to know.
I will find that out from Alice for you.
Does that do the committees?
Committees, oh, you guys have reports for your committees?
Or ENSWAT, did you, do we have an alternate ENSWAT?
I don't, I don't think, oh, yeah, we need a new alternate for Meniscus Hollow Waste Management Authority. Jerry is unable to fulfill that because he has a conflict of interest there.
Bruce, want to do that one?
I'll do it at the mayor's request. I won't volunteer for it. I was chair of that committee for a long time.
Put Bruce down.
Alternate.
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 Exactly.
Don't miss a meeting, Larry.
And now we have council members' reports on the committees that they have attended over the past few weeks.
Well, I'm good at welfare, yeah.
I'll just, me and Larry attended the water wastewater committee meeting on the 21st, oh, sorry, on the, okay, I'm sorry. It was the, oh, here it is, on February 18th. And apparently we got a donation of some UV modules from the City of Petaluma. Nikki gave us an update on that and they normally would cost us, how much Nikki, would they cost us?
$10,000.
Yeah, we got them because they're upgrading their system and so we got them. And Talltree is going to be our new city engineer and they're doing some upgrades to our camera truck and, let's see, and then I think, Walter, you talked about where we went up, we wanted to be part of the Cal Sewers Wastewater Surveillance Program where they test the water for things and-
That's through the county, yes.
The county, yeah. And we worked too keen on it just because it was, it's nice to know information, not required, but then if we start doing it, we could be potentially told, now you got to do it. So it's like during COVID, apparently, they were testing for COVID, you know, and so.
And there's a high financial cost to it and everything that we won't get reimbursed then for, yeah.
Testing the pharmacy.
Yeah, so, so I think that was kind of the highlight and then we just got some updates on some other things that we had going and that was it.
Jerry, is that engineering firm civil engineering or is it, what engineering degrees do they put on the table?
Yes, civil engineering.
Just civil engineering?
Yes, correct.
I guess we floated it out there again so it won't be Laco. Laco may still do projects for us, but now it'll be Talltree. I guess we're trying to spread the love.
But he is taught by contract, not-
They're the designated city engineer for our purposes. So they're, they're basically going to represent our interests on projects, capital projects, plan review and helping scoping, or scoping projects with Walter and his team.
They're not an employee, they're a contract engineer that we have and they're a retainer. Yes, yes, yes.
And then we have another body of on-call, that is the Laco EBA, Tamho?
Yeah, they're, yeah, that's about it. But what they are, what happens is when we have bigger projects, those will be put out for a request for proposal to all the qualified engineers and everything. We won't be just doling them out to someone and everything. They'll have to apply and we'll get the best price and they're most responsible party for those projects.
But Laco used, I mean, I don't know who the most recent one was, has been for the last 10 days.
Laco was our on-call city engineer. They did not apply for it this time. We actually changed the provisions that the on-call city engineer or that firm could not also be taking projects. They could not double dip on both of them. There's a separation now, which is much cleaner, yes.
So that's all we had there.
Is there any good, oh, public comment, want to hear that? And good and welfare?
Good and welfare, we have the, the senior senator Chili Cookoff this Friday. I think both me and Matthew will be judging amongst other people, so.
And the grill and give on the next one.
Thank you.
And the Rotary has their deal on the first-
Grill and give that here on the first, with-
Anybody else?
So the, this is to Frontier Days, the Fourth of July is on a Friday this year. And can you tell us what dates that all the activities are, what day do they start?
Well, we start for Hometown, which I believe is the 20th, it's a Friday of June. It starts simply in June.
Okay.
And then you're going to go to the Truck Pool, which is June 27th. And then it'll go into the third is your night rodeo.
Okay, the third is what?
Then the fourth, the fifth, and we have the fifth is an all-day thing too.
Okay.
We have June Rodeo on the Fulton Bronx, so we'll be down there all day.
Thank you.
Because it was so hot last year, we're moving the rodeo more in the evening on the fourth. There won't be at 4:00, it'll be at 7:00.
Oh. Thank you. The parade's on the-
Of course, we'll be down the parade.
I can give a little car show update, if you're interested. That's on the 25th of May, oh, sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Council, John Kavaznik, Chamber of Commerce. Car show's on the 25th of May and it starts at 10:00, registration's at 7:00 and starts at 7:00. And it will be a little different this year. The pattern will be from Wood Street to Commercial, down Commercial to Marin Street. So it'll be a little bigger, a little more of a footprint. We're doing more this year. We're going to have a lot of vendors in the park this year and hopefully if it's, if the TAC meeting goes like I hope, we'll have some food trucks in City Hall parking lot here. And we expect a really big show. We sold out first year on, on Main Street last year. We had to park down Savings Bank and wherever we could stick cars, so Commercial Street's going to be pretty exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your, that date?
May 22nd.
May 22nd?
May 25th.
25th.
May 25th. Also, the Grange breakfast is that day and traffic will take what's commonly known as the Frontier Days parade route, you know, and we're right by the Grange, get breakfast.
Thank you. So it's a Sunday.
Sunday, 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 Sunday.
Get your car ready, Mr. Mayor. Hey, I fired it up last weekend. Ran.
Mr. Mayor, I also attended the Meniscus, you know, Transit Authority meeting earlier today and really was just happy to meet people and kind of see how things were going. So I just want to make sure that we know that Willetts is being represented. I also want to thank Ms. Rodriguez for coming as a citizen, just to lend her expertise to something that she cares a lot about, which is the city. So I want to thank her for being a citizen and still caring about the city and helping me understand more about the work that the EMTA is doing. And I got updated on some of the, some of the work that they're doing connecting our small communities in the north. So as soon as I get more information, I'll be happy to share more information, but I just want to let the people know that slowly the city council and a new member is here are getting acclimated to our responsibilities and I'm looking forward to doing more and sharing more information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more-
Anything from the community?
Public comment? And we are about to go into closed session. I am opening public comment before closed session that takes place because it is not allowed after closed session takes place. It's pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, City Manager. Same as last one?
I heard the comment the same as before and that's why I'm here to speak on this issue. Since the new council has been seated, the city manager's performance has appeared on nearly every regular agenda. This level of scrutiny so soon after the election has raised concerns within your community. At the last meeting, while waiting in the hallway on the other side of the building for nearly two hours, I could hear Councilmember Alman yelling at a city employee. This is not the level of professionalism the public expects from an elected official. Such conduct reflects poorly on the council and it erodes the public's trust in its body's ability to govern with integrity. The public is questioning whether this council has given the employee a fair opportunity to succeed or whether a decision was made before any real effort was made to work together. You were elected to serve the people, not carry out personal agendas. The public expects fairness, professionalism and accountability, not just for the employees that you personally support, but for all city employees. Every person serves this city, deserves respect and every decision made in the chamber should be based solely on facts. You act in your current role on our behalf. Please, please demonstrate leadership that reflects the trust the people have placed in you. Thank you.
I have to respond. I appreciate you talking about leadership and the necessity of having leadership because the last city council was asked in writing. You've had your turn to speak, now it's my turn.
I have 30 minutes.
Okay. And, and the last city council was put in writing to write down the expectations of the city manager and, and how the evaluation was happening. And that city manager, I think you run it, failed to write down anything. And so this city council is put in a position to try and to correct the deficiency of the last city council. Thank you.
May I ask how much time is left on the record?
A minute 31 seconds.
Okay. Sir, this is the second time you've tried to silence me and it's, it's inappropriate and I have the right to file a complaint if you're, if you're going to continue to silence me. And there is also a rule that the audience is not to make disruptive comments and I have continually listened to disruptive comments from the back of the room where there's been no adherence to controlling the room. And so I'm asking that you also address that matter. I'm sorry if you don't like me or you're bothered by what I have to say, but I am a member of the public and there are lots of people that are concerned and I have the right to express those concerns and I will continue to express those concerns where I, where I see there's a need. I am passionate about this community, I love my community and I want to see that everybody is treated with respect.
I also will have expressed a couple times up here that I think if you have specific guidance for your city manager, things that he is doing that you don't like or that he isn't doing that you want him to do, this is totally your prerogative as city council members. I hope you will do so respectfully and clearly and so that he can do a good job for the city. My, my experience as a city council person under his management, as a city manager, was that he was very good at communicating what was going on. He took direction. He's treated us respectfully. He was very honest. So I have a great deal of respect for him and I think he wants to do a good job, not only for you five council members, but for the city. And I think you can make that happen by treating him with respect and giving him the kind of guidance for what you expect his performance to be. I don't quite understand why it takes multiple meetings, every meeting, every agendized council meeting to, especially not if you're going to harangue him, but if you're not giving him guidance, what are you doing? And I really think you need to take into account that if you drive him away, you're going to have a hell of a time finding somebody of his quality, somebody who's even qualified at all. I mean, city managers are really hard to come by and my experience has been that if you work with him, he'll work with you. So I, I really hope you'll, you'll do that.
Madge, I have a question that you don't have to answer because you don't have to. But the last city council was put in writing to lay out objectives for the city manager and the last city council failed to do that.
To put objectives-
Objectives of what, what the responsibilities and goals are for a city manager. And the last, it was put in writing, requested the city council and they didn't do it. And so we are, this, this city council is, is trying to right a wrong that the last city council, which I believe you were part of, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, just stating the facts. the facts, failed to do. And so we're put into a tough situation. So I appreciate your words, but we're trying to right the wrong.
Well, part of his job, and he fulfilled it, was to hold goal-setting and priority-setting. And we reviewed that publicly. We reviewed it privately in closed session. Were we getting the performance we wanted? And we reviewed that mostly in public, because the goal-setting process was in public as well. And I think that's the job of the city manager. He has a lot of balls in the air all the time, all the different departments and staff people, the budget, et cetera. And I think, I'm not sure what you expected in a written, you know, I guess, job description. He does have a job description, and I don't think he failed to fulfill his job description. Maybe I'm wrong, and maybe there's specific things you want to see that we didn't ask for in the previous council, but if so, do it carefully and thoughtfully and respectfully. Because the city needs guidance, and we need a good city manager. And I think we have somebody who can do that if you work with him.
Thank you.
Can I say something, Larry?
Here.
Madge just reminded me, we did have, we have a goal-setting session coming up March 5th, where not only council members, but the public can give input on what the goals of the city should be. And so to characterize that, I guess we didn't have any goals for the city manager, I think is wrong. And I think it's something that is a moving target, because as things happen or the public raises concerns, I think it's something that we need to be interactive with. So March 5th, it would be a public meeting, and as we try to set goals, and it's a new council here, I urge the public to show up and participate. That's, I guess, part of that process for the city manager and all the employees, that you see what the goals we're setting, and we try to hopefully set them where members of the public have basically offered their input to.
Just to clarify, the city manager's own representative sent correspondence to council two weeks ago.
This is a confidential issue that we really shouldn't talk about.
Yes.
This question, what is many? I haven't seen you in any meetings, and I think as the public, we have the right to know, because in my opinion, you was doing exceptional job. So what is it? Is that confidential, too?
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yes.
So the, I would like to let everybody know that a goal-setting strategic planning meeting is Wednesday, March 5th at 8:30 AM at the County Museum in the Wanacott Room. And we will now go into-
In the what?
The Wanacott Room.
Are we not, are we not being fined? You're not hearing that?
Yeah.
Wagerman that. Okay.
The report out to the public is no action.
Okay, and it is 10:28.